So, January fifteenth mid-month meeting. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Everyone please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come to you and serve. We thank you again for all of the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us. Lord, we ask a special blessing to keep safety, a hedge of protection over our public safety officers. And all of the folks that work here in the city of Lawrence, we ask that you continue to cover them with your safety. Give them the discernment to make good decisions and just bless their hearts and souls. Lord, we ask that you continue to, just continue to work with us as we try to do our best to, to meet your will. Lord, we also want to say a special prayer for the families in Southern California that have been just ravished by the wildfires and things of that sort. And so we ask that you just give their hearts comfort and, and, you know, put your will on, on what needs to be done. And so we ask all these things, all this cold winter day, we're thankful for that too, Lord. We ask all these things in your servant Christ Jesus' name, amen.
The next agenda item will be roll call of members and determination of quorum. Let the record reflect that all members are present and that we do have a quorum. Let the record also reflect that the meeting has been properly noticed in accordance with Indiana's open door law. And copies of the agenda are located at the back of the meeting room. For any citizens wishing to make comments later in the agenda, please sign up using the signup sheet located at the back of the meeting room. The next item will be the comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions. Do we have any comments?
I have a comment, Mr. President. A constituent by the name of Patty has wrote an email and she was concerned about the speeding on Fifty-Sixth Street where the school zone is. And she just wanted to make people aware, and I believe she has spoken to the chief about this also. So I just wanted people to be aware that there is a school flashing sign on Fifty-Sixth Street and people do not slow down. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Are there any other comments?
Mr. President?
Yes.
My district, of course, is, you know, District Two. It's, it's in the older part of Lawrence, actually in the original part of Lawrence. And, uh, one of the big problems that we have in that district is in zoning and code enforcement. My understanding is we rely on Indianapolis to basically do our code enforcement. And I guess there's some fine line there that I still don't quite understand. But whenever there's something that can't be enforced, whether it be a, uh, an agreement for a variance or whatever that someone doesn't comply with, we have to turn to Indianapolis, which basically turns a deaf ear. So with that said, I was told last year, in the beginning of the year, that what we needed was lobbyists. And the administration hired two lobbyist firms. And I was told that one of the things that they were going to focus on was getting state legislature to allow Indianapolis to have, to let us have our total control of zoning enforcement. So I would ask our new president, if we could set aside a time in the very near future of meetings to have the administration give us an update on what has happened with that entire year of us hiring these lobbyists. I'd like to know what they've accomplished. So, uh, we have people from the administration. This is something that I want you to be aware of, that I would definitely like to know what, if anything, has been accomplished and, and definitely in relations to, you know, to this code enforcement. Something else that I've got a concern about is, uh, I've had a lot of complaints from neighbors and all the complaints from local restaurant facilities in my district too about this barrage of these food trailers that are just setting up on just about every empty lot and every corner that there is. They come out mainly of night and they'll sit up right next to a, a, a brick and mortar restaurant and take trade away from them. And then by later that night or early in the morning, they're gone until, you know, the next night. So I was told by our DPW people, they were working on some sort of an ordinance. Uh, because my understanding from an investigation that was done a few years back, that a lot of these vendors, they don't have, uh, board of health permits. They don't have, well, there aren't those and apparently even require a permit for them to set up and operate. So they're basically, they're just, uh, you know, they're just wild guns that do what they want to do. So, uh, I would like to know from the administration when or if, if this is another one of these problems with Indianapolis, or is this something that we can do on our own? Because I've been, uh, yeah, if we can address it now, I mean, it's up to the president.
We'll wait until comments of the administration, if that's okay. We'll add it to that.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I, uh, I have a comment. I, uh, got a, a, I just got reminded, back in December nineteenth, I got a message from a constituent. I apologize that I wasn't able to make the rescheduled meeting on the first, but it's my first opportunity to share this with her. And, and I will say before I read this, I was, I'm very particularly concerned about this because I warned the administration that this was going to happen. And here it is. "I'm reaching out because I left a message and no one is responding to the amount of trash that is on my street and needs, needs addressed because it's a bit of an eyesore. Is there anything you can do? I'm at Forty-Eighth and Atwell, and I live on Atwell, and there are three to four houses that have heavy trash that's just been sitting there for months. I don't think there's a pickup until May, so what can we do? Thank you." And so I told her that I would express that in a public forum to the DPW, but I also expect to her that, of course, we're under contract, but that it's been a long-term concern of mine with the movement of rentals and people leaving and, and leaving that stuff out there and, you know, with our landlords and all of that. It just, I'm, I'm concerned about that issue. And here's more than my concern, it's something from a constituent. So, uh, that's my, my covering.
Are there any other comments? All righty, the next agenda item is the approval of minutes for our January ninth of 2025. Are there any questions or corrections to the minutes of the meeting for January ninth?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January ninth.
All right, thank you, Counselor Chavis, and for the, the, and then Betty Robinson also for the second. Is there any further discussion? All right, we will now proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying yea. All those opposed? All right. Rick did not vote, so would we need to?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. My, all right. So it looks like that was unanimous. The next agenda item is signing of the vouchers approves. Okay, yep. Next agenda item is reports of committees. Do we have any reports? No? All righty. And the next is unfinished business, for which we have none. So we will move to new business. First item on new business is the consideration of council.
President Kramer, I'm sorry, were we skipping the vouchers?
I'm sorry. Okay, okay, my fault.
No, that's okay.
So... Yes, we will proceed. The next item will be signing of the vouchers. Is there any questions or corrections?
We have a question. We are confused about, um, the, we received information with an updated cover sheet regarding nine hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-two cents with payroll claims. And the December fifteenth twenty-four date is incorrect on the first document and the December thirty-first twenty-four date is correct on the second document. And so we would just want to make sure that we're not paying an extra million dollars. And so we want to make sure of that before we approve the vouchers.
So we'll need somebody from the administration to address that before we can move forward with approving the vouchers. I mean, it appears that it's duplicate in terms of the payroll. And we just need, we need confirmation is, you know, is there an error in what, or is there a misunderstanding what we're interpreting? So if someone can please reach out to the controller or, you know, someone that can answer that question. And, and I would just say for myself personally, um, if, if the controller or somebody from the controller's office is not going to be available to attend these meetings, we need somebody that can speak to the vouchers and the claims. Because we're not just going to sit here and be approving off on everything and never have any questions. We're going to have questions. We don't want to stall the payment process for any of our vendors or for anyone else for that matter. So, um, if they can't be here in person, at least be here on video so that we can continue to conduct the business of the city.
All righty, so can anyone from the administration answer their questions? The answer to the payroll? All righty.
I, I would move that we table it till next meeting. I mean, we need these answers. We can't, I personally won't be approving it without the answers.
So we have a motion to table? Do we have a second?
I'll move.
I'll second, okay.
All righty, so we will table the signing of vouchers. All righty, so we'll move to new business. Oh, yeah, we have to vote, yep. So we will take, we have a motion to table in a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, let the record reflect, we have unanimous vote. All right, now we will move to new business, which is the consideration of council appointments to the redevelopment commission. All righty. And, "All appointments made this evening shall be subject to and made for the terms governed by statute and any relevant ordinances and until their successors are appointed and qualified." We will begin with the council appointments to the redevelopment commission. This council has two appointments to make, and I will seek nominations from each of you. After the nomination closes, I will ask each of you to state on the record by roll call the nominees you would like to appoint. And based on the nominees received, I will call the roll in alphabetical order based on last names of counselors, and the clerk will keep track of votes. Are there any questions? All righty.
Do we have a list of names for the positions?
Yes. I don't have the answers to the names. We have...
Just need to be development, that's all. I got the others.
Four, yeah, I have no access right now.
I didn't like that. It's eight of eight.
Yes, then.
So Sarah Whitaker.
Townsend, that was four.
The redevelopment. Okay, and then for the zoning, oh, that's it. Okay, so with Alvarez. And, uh, Shell Carey, Alterman. And, uh, what's her name? Horstman?
Karen.
Karen.
Karen Horstman.
Yeah. I think this shows that everyone?
Yes, so I just need you guys to make the nominations correct. All righty. Do we have any nominations for appointments to the redevelopment commission? We have two appointments. We would need to nominate them.
I'd like to nominate Sarah Whitaker.
Sarah Whitaker?
Second.
All righty.
I'd like to nominate Michael Townsend.
And Michael Townsend, okay. All righty, Madam Clerk, can you please read the names of the nominees received for the record?
Michael Townsend and Sarah Whitaker.
Are there any other nominations before we close the window? All righty, the window's closed. We will now proceed to a vote. Each counselor is asked to state two nominees they want to approve to appoint to the redevelopment commission. Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Uh, can you say the two names?
To both, Sarah Whitaker and Michael Townsend.
And Zack Kramer, yes, to both Sarah Whitaker and Michael Townsend. Counselor Freeman?
Two, um, votes, Sarah Whitaker and Michael Townsend.
Counselor Giles?
Yes, um, to approve both Sarah Whitaker and, did you say Michael Townsend? Yes.
All right, and Counselor Jennings?
Yes, to Sarah Whitaker and yes to Michael Townsend.
Counselor Crone?
Yes, to Sarah Whitaker and yes to Michael Townsend.
And Counselor Mazur?
Yes, to Sarah Whitaker and Michael Townsend.
All right, and Counselor Robinson?
Yes, to Sarah Whitaker and yes to Michael Townsend.
And Counselor Wells?
Yes, to the two nominees.
Madam Clerk, can you please report the results of the votes?
Nine votes for Michael Townsend and Sarah Whitaker.
All righty. We will now consider council appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The coun, the council now needs to consider the Board of Zoning Appeals and the alternate to the Board of Zoning Appeal appointments. We will start with three Board of Zoning Appeal appointments before proceeding to the alternate appointment. And we'll do the role, the, the voting the same way. Does anyone have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Faith Alvarez.
Second.
I would like to nominate Eugene West.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Jennings. All righty. And then... Are there any other nominations for the window closes?
I would like to nominate Karen Horstman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Freeman. All righty, the nomination window is now closed. We will now proceed to a vote. Each counselor is asked to state the three nominees they want to vote to appoint to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Counselor Chavis?
Yes, to Faith Alvarez, Eugene West, and Karen Celestino Horstman.
And then Counselor Kramer, yes as well to all three. Uh, Karen Horstman and then Faith Alvarez and, I'm sorry, what was last name?
Eugene.
Eugene West, yes. Counselor Freeman?
Yes, to the three nominees, Faith Alvarez and Eugene West and Karen Horstman.
Thank you. Counselor Giles?
Yes, to the three nominees. Can I just say the three? I don't want to repeat all three today. Is that okay? Yes, for the three that were nominated, yes.
Counselor Jennings?
Yes, to Faith Alvarez, Eugene West, Karen, and Karen Horstman.
And Counselor Crone?
Yes, to Faith Alz, Faith Alvarez, I'm sorry, Eugene West and Karen Horstman.
All righty, and Counselor Mazur?
Yes, to the three nominees.
All right, Counselor Robinson?
Yes, to Eugene West, Faith Alvarez, and Karen Horstman.
All right, and Counselor Wells?
Yes, to the three nominees.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please report the results to the record?
I have nine votes for Faith Alvarez, nine votes for Karen Horstman, and nine votes for Eugene West.
All right, thank you very much for that. The next item under new business will be the consideration of council appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals. I will now seek nominations for appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Do we have any nominations?
For the alternate, right?
For the alternate, yes.
Yeah. I will nominate Shell Carey.
Shell Carey? Second.
C-H-E-L-L-E.
Carey.
All right.
C-A-R-E-Y.
And thank you, Counsel Carlos Jennings, for the second. Uh, do we have any other nominations? All righty. We will now proceed with the vote. Each counselor will be asked to state one nominee that they'd like to vote. Or since there is only one, we'll just say yes, vote individually for Shell Carey as appointment. Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Kramer, yes. Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Jennings?
Yes.
Counselor Crone?
Yes.
Counselor Mazur?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Wells? All right. Madam Clerk, could you please report the results to the record?
We have nine votes for Shell Carey for BZA alternate.
Okay, great. We will go ahead and move to the next item on the agenda. And the next item is new business, which will be rezoning petition twenty-four, Zone Zero One. Madam Clerk, could you please read the petition number, address, and request to the record?
Docket number twenty-four, Z-O-N, zero-one. Address, one nineteen fifty East Sixty-Fifth Street, Indianapolis, Indiana, four six two three six.
All righty, the rezoning petition has an advertised public hearing that has been noticed for tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to speak tonight, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. I will now open up the public hearing. The floor is now open for the petitioner to present the rezoning petition to the common counsel. Petitioner, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please note that your presentation must not exceed ten minutes. And you may now present rezoning petition twenty-four, Z-O-N, zero-one, to the common counsel.
My name is Paul Pozello.
Hi, Paul.
And I'm representing the owner of the property. I don't have a, the only thing I, I mean, my assumption is that there's been information presented, the, that you've read the file that we made last year, actually, late in the fall, that indicates what the property is and what we plan to do with it, because there were drawings filed. So we haven't prepared a formal presentation, other than the fact that we're interested in going from a C-three to a D-three, um, on the property, which is an existing building, an existing residential structure that we're wanting to remodel into a, uh, as opposed to a single-family residence, a, a kind of duplex setting where there'll be two rentable units on the property. So it doesn't fall into the zoning category of the C-three, so we're requesting the D-three rezon.
Do any counselors have any questions?
Just to refresh my memory, can you give some more details about the location and, and just some more?
Well, it's at one one nine five zero East Sixty-Fifth Street. And it's a current, it's currently a, um, it's a house structure, okay? It's a wood frame structure. It's completely derelict. There's nothing, it hasn't been occupied for a period of time. It did have a business in there before. As, as far as I know, it was a grooming, pet grooming business that was there prior to this, the, the, my client's purchase as a commercial structure. The, um, it's in a predominantly residential neighborhood. I'm sure that some of you, I, I don't know which district it's in, I'm sorry.
It's my district.
But, but it's a, it's, it's in a very residential district area, you know, the, in terms of the appearance of it, uh, right near the water tower. And, um, so, you know, we feel like this is a very appropriate use. Um, my client is not interested in making it into a, a kind of commercial business venture other than to, uh, you know, to remodel the structure into a, um, a two-unit dwelling, which would be, you know, like a, um, just a two-unit apartment, which falls even into the residential code. Is, did you have any other questions other than that? Did I address them?
So here's, you will be, you own the property and you will be renting it out? You're, you're not an out-of-state?
No, no, ma'am.
Person, thank you.
Right.
I have a question.
Yes.
So you will be remodeling the existing structure, or will you be tearing down and?
No, we won't be tearing it down. It's, it's a very, um, it's got some age to it. I mean, it's a, you could call it a historic structure. Dates to nineteenth century is my, um, I didn't do any kind of formal research on that as an architect, as his architect, but, uh, it's, uh, shows a kind of construction that, um, was done probably in the nineteenth century. So it's a very old structure. Uh, the outside appearance of it, um, there's some modifications that are being proposed for the back of it, um, which will just affect the, the kind of lean-to roof that's towards the back. We will be adding a few windows, even modifications to some windows that were created and, and, and put on the structure in recent times. And when I say recent times, I mean within forty, fifty years relative to the age of the structure. So there's not any substantial difference that we're doing to the structure that will change its overall appearance. It's still going to have its, the pitch of the roof, uh, the major windows that, that exist on the side, which appear original to the structure. As a matter of fact, um, we're going to do some work that will not just affect it cosmetically, but also affect it structurally. So we're actually making it a more solid building by adding more, um, we're completely revamping the footings and foundation systems to the house. We're adding, um, proposing to add framing, which will solidify the house a lot more. Um, we're putting, um, a new, um, a new, not to get too technical, but like a plate line that will bring this, this, the wood studs that hold up the walls. Uh, we're, we're creating a new surface for them to sit on. So we have, you know, metal clips that we're going to put on every stud and make sure that it's solidly, um, you know, reconstructed, especially per the building code, the residential code that, you know, the city of Lawrence will, is requiring, um, for, for such a project. Any, any one, and as a matter of fact, um, a one and, the one and two family dwelling code does not even require an architect to oversee its reconstruction or work. But my client has hired me to oversee it, and I've prepared drawings, uh, structural drawings in addition to just cosmetic drawings that will suffice a, a building permit review, but also a real... critical review of its framing, which is not in good condition at the present time.
Mr. President, can I ask something? Very nice.
I'm sorry?
Very nice. I have a picture of it.
Oh, good.
Another question.
Yeah.
You said rental property. Will this be rental for a single family, single families, or rental for a group home? What type of rental?
I think it's just market rate units that will be like a duplex. So it could be single family, depending on the, on the makeup of that particular family unit. I think that they're open to, you know?
Single families, they're open to group homes, they're open to?
I, I'm not, I, I can't really address that, and probably Stefano can't really.
Will you come to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Can you also please state your name for the record and your address?
Oh, my name, my name is Stefano Lorenzito. So, we tried to rent the property to people that needs in, in the area. So, the, the property in the back would be like, one bed, one bathroom, and the unit in front would be like, two, two, two bedroom, and two and a half bathroom. So, but we are open to anybody that like to rent the unit.
Now you open another question.
Yeah.
And you said the property in the back, and the property in the front, so they're going to be on the same floor. Are they going to have the same entry, or will there be an entry in the back and an entry in the front?
Will be two different entry. So, the main, the main structure, the house would be one piece, but would be divided in the apartment to the front side, to the back side. So, the apartment in the back has a, the entrance to the back, and the apartment in the front is just from the street, the sixty-five, what is it, East Sixty-Fifth Street.
How is the parking? Is there enough parking for how many vehicles?
Yeah, so, the unit in the back has like one driveway, but it's knockover parking, and we keep it the same that where it was. And the unit in the front has two, have a two-car parking in the front. But they're, both there are knockover.
Okay.
Just we keep it the same, because we, I guess, we are not allowed to have a garage in the front.
Mr. President, can I speak?
Mr. Freeman.
Okay. So what is the square footage now on the duplex?
Uh, what is it? Twelve, twelve hundred?
Yeah, probably about twelve. Sorry, I don't.
Like twelve hundred?
About twelve hundred. So it's going to be twelve hundred for one unit, and twelve hundred for the other unit? Or do you split the twelve hundred?
I mean, we split.
By being a duplex?
Yeah, man.
The, the, the unit that's in front has two bedrooms on the second floor. It's the unit that's taking the bedrooms on the second floor, so you may have a second floor plan in front of you, that indicates the front unit having the two bedrooms there. And then the one, the unit in the back is, has a bedroom. It's not a studio apartment, but it has a bedroom, and it's on the same floor. So it only has one bedroom.
So would there be any additional square footage added on? You said you were bringing the studs?
No addition.
Okay.
We're just changing, as I mentioned, we're going to change the roof pitch on the back.
Mm-hmm.
That's it. So no addition.
So it's additional, well, it's twelve hundred square feet?
Per unit.
Per unit.
Per unit.
And actually, the front unit is bigger than the back unit, as I said, because it's got, it's occupying, it's the unit that's encompassing the pre-existing stairs, and so we're going to use that as a way to access two bedrooms on the second floor, so that, so that one of the units at least can utilize that. And it wasn't feasible to build a second stair to share the second floor, so they're not really fifty-fifty units. It's more like, you know, sixty, forty, even seventy, thirty, really.
Alright, thank you very much for your presentation. Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to rezoning petition twenty-four Z-O-N oh-one? Alright. When providing comments to common counsel, please keep in mind that the combined total limit for all members of the public is speaking in favor or against rezoning petition twenty-four Z-O-N oh-one is ten minutes. First, I will call all those in favor of the petition to come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record before you speak. Alrighty. Let's, we will now move, is anyone against petition twenty-four Z-O-N oh-one and would like to speak, please approach the podium? Alright. Okay. We, I understand that a representative is president from the city of Lawrence to report on the zoning petition. Can you please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record?
Hi, Keith Johnson, office right here, nine thousand and one, East Fifty-Ninth. Thank you for the chance. The short summary is Whitfield administration is in support of the petition. DPW and permit office have been supportive the whole time. Don't really see any need for commitments or other things. The master plan is mixed-use, which you can say Oakland and Village is very much a mixed-use village. And in general, blanket statement, we're pretty much always going to be in, in support of more housing, and more neighbors, and more residents, when we come up to this microphone. So thank you for the chance to support this petition, and hope you do.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions from council members? Alright. Finally, prior to closing the public hearing, I would like to provide a final opportunity for petitioner and members of the public to come forward to the podium and respond to any of the previous comments relating to rezoning petition number twenty-four Z-O-N oh-one during tonight's public hearing. Please note that the common counsel has a set five, lim, five-minute time limit regarding additional comments from the petitioner, and a combined total time limit of five minutes on all additional comments from all members of the public speaking on rezoning petition number twenty-four Z-O-N oh-one. Alright, I will now close the public hearing. Counselors, do we have any questions or comments? Alright, I will now seek a motion for rezoning petition twenty-four Z-O-N oh-one.
So move.
Second.
Alright. Thank you, Counselor Jennings, for the motion, and thank you, Counselor Chavis, for the second. Is there any further discussion? We will now proceed with the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Alright. Please let, let the record show that the vote is unanimous. We will now move to comments of the administration. Do we have any comments in the administration's evening? Can we actually start with Rick's question from earlier that we moved, and then we'll get to Leandre? Thank you.
Greg, good night, Chief of Staff, City of Lawrence. And just, I think most of you know my background. I've sat on both sides. I've served two, two terms on the city council in Kokomo, and actually served three terms in the administration as mayor of the city of Kokomo. So, trying to understand the nuances here in Lawrence. I've also spoken, for the last five years, I've worked as an independent consultant. I've spoken at city council meeting in Portage, and, which is in the northwest corner of the state. I've also spoken at city council meetings in New Albany, which is in the southeast corner of the state, and I've spoken at about twenty-five city council meetings in between. So with that, I'm trying to understand who, the responsibility. This is, of course, just the first few meetings I've been to. On the food truck issue, I, I can only go from what I know historically from my, what I've experienced in, in my city, and what I've experienced in the cities that I've worked in. Things like food truck ordinances, there are many throughout the state, and cities that have done that. Sometimes those are led by the administration, sometimes those are led by council members. So my take is, if there's something that we think needs addressed, I think Mayor Whitfield's made it clear to me that she's very open to looking at any of those concerns, whether it be food truck ordinances, or just tweaking any other code enforcement ordinances and such, as maybe. So I don't know if, I'm going to, since I haven't been here historically, have you guys looked into doing a food truck ordinance?
I can say Lisa, and, and myself, and Rick, and Sharon's been there longer than us. Sharon, have you heard of a?
We've discussed it, but we don't have one to my knowledge.
That, okay, that's what, that was my, I asked a couple of people behind me, Keith and Leandre, in my, it's kind of hard to enforce something that's not on the books.
Well, I was told by DPW, you know, one of the head people from DPW, that you were working on something that would be done shortly. This was like, like, last summer.
I was with the DPW director today. He's, and, and since I've been, in since the latter part of November, he's not mentioned one word to me. So who, you've talked to Chris?
No, it wasn't Chris. It was, I, don't hold me to it, but I was, thought it was Renee that had mentioned it to us. I think she may have addressed to the council, but I didn't know that I was told that.
Okay.
And, but I do know that there was an inspection done, gosh, a couple, three years ago, and maybe a couple of years ago. And that inspection came up to show that ninety-seven percent of these food off, truck operators, and trailer operators, hardly none of them had, you know, any kind of board of health certification.
They're, they're supposed to get a Marion County Board of Health certificate, what?
Well, they have nothing, because the problem is, there's no enforcement. You know, that's the whole problem with Lawrence. There is no enforcement. There is, and I'm not criticizing our DPW people, because my understanding is their hands are tied, because this all comes from Indianapolis to enforce it.
My, my guess is that's probably right. If it's a department, Marion County Board of Health, it would come from them, and they don't have the DPW, or the, the street department would not have code, be able to enforce any of the board of health issues, if I under, does that sound correct? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. So yes, I guess, if you want to put regulations in, and stipulations on where they can park, when they can park, hours of operations, if they have to get a permit from the city, I think the mayor would be open to that. I know she's open to trying to streamline a lot of things. So, if there's, if the council wants to meet with us, I think we'd be happy to meet, myself and some others from the administration, and see if that's worthwhile, worth doing.
Yeah, I think, I think we do, as, as both a council and the administration, need to look at it, because I just read recently where surrounding communities like Noblesville are starting to clamp down
Yeah.
on food trucks, and, and making sure that, you know, they're following their, their ordinances and their guidelines. What we don't want to happen is, you know, to, to someone's point, I don't know if it was Rick or someone else who made the point, but, you know, people start migrating here, because we have no ordinances, and we don't enforce anything. So then they start coming here
Sure.
Because it's easier to do business here. So I think we do need to have, obviously, something, an ordinance that, to the things that you mentioned.
Yep.
Outlines where, what, when, how.
Yep.
So that we have some structures in place, so we just don't have people, plus they're, they're parking on people's private property.
Sure, yeah. No, and we can, I think all those, there's probably, if you look around, and if we all looked around, we could probably find some city, somewhere within the state of Indiana, that's put something in. And what I used to do my, historically, was take the best pieces, if, that I could, from other cities, and take what works in this city, what we don't want, don't take that, and kind of cherry pick, and, and provide better ones.
I'm, I'm sorry, guys, but this is interesting. I'm, I'm not aware of, trying to figure out what the problem is.
Well, the problem is, is you're sitting up next to people that are paying taxes, and, and utilities, you know, brick and mortar restaurants, and these brick and mortar restaurants that are doing it by the book are now in competition with these guys that just come from wherever, and park their trailer and serve their food.
Okay, so I'm glad to hear that. Reason I brought that up is because I've heard this conversation morph. Is it about permitting? We talked about some investigation of ninety percent not being permitted. If that's an issue, that's a Marion County Health Department issue, and not a Lawrence, not a Lawrence issue. And so if it's, if it's an issue of competitions of businesses, then I would also think that the Lawrence Chamber, these business owners, should be coming in here and advocating for themselves. As a resident of Lawrence, I actually look for food trucks to eat off of, because if you're someone, like tonight, if you want to go get a bite to eat after nine o'clock, there's nothing open in Lawrence. I applaud the diversity that comes off the food trucks, and I look forward to in my community. Of course, we want them to be healthy. I don't want them serving food that makes people sick, but I'm not aware, and that's why I want to make sure if I was made aware. I also have not heard, have not witnessed or heard of any loitering, or crimes, or anything like that. I also know that some of these gas stations and other places will rent out their outlots, so they make, sort of private property. So sometimes you think that they're being, they're just there, but they may be a, 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 a ownership there. But as a city that has food deserts, I don't know if I want to be discouraging food options that are also inexpensive, and, and are serving the community.
No, I, I, I think that's.
That's the other side of the pillow.
Right. And that's, and that's, it isn't, it isn't a simple answer, and, and, but I, I will just reach out and say that we'll, we would be happy to work with you, to try to craft something that works for the city of Lawrence. Or it may, you may reach out, we may reach the.
Or we may not have a problem.
May not have, may not have as big of issue as we think. I don't know. That's, we, we looked at one in Kokomo, did, chose eventually not to do it, just because it was too cumbersome, and the, and the enforcement was going to be much more cumbersome than, than the problem, if it's, so, so, but I guess I'm offering the, yes, we'd be happy to meet.
Yes, if, two years ago, from Post Road to Franklin Road, this was two years ago, there were like, eleven of these food trucks, trailers. Now there's like thirty some of them, and, you know, they have now kind of spread out. But I do service work, you know, that's what I do. And I go into these different communities, you know, Greenwood, Fisher's, Noblesville, the surrounding cities. You do not see, you know, you may, you may possibly see a food truck, but I honestly, I've been looking for them. I don't see them in these other communities, and nothing like what I see. In District Two, that's where they seem to be, almost all of them congregate, is in my district. And maybe in District One, I'm not sure.
They, they're in District One and Two, because we don't have any restaurants. The whole city of Lawrence don't even have a sit-down restaurant, compared to Greenwood, Noblesville, and those other cities. And so they're here because they're serving a need. They're a great opportunity. Well, I get a two-dollar taco, and I see a lot of single parents, and folks getting their two-dollar taco as well. And so I think that they come here because there's a need for them here. I applaud them. I hope they follow code.
Yeah.
But I'm going to hit a truck on my way home.
Sabachi place on, on Franklin, it's delicious.
And I will say, the Taco Express folks started off in a truck, and now has, and now has a business, and I see them at Marion County Fairs, I see them at state fairs, I see them at concerts, in and out of Marion County, and I applaud to see the growth of that business, and I've seen their kids grow. And so that's a sense of community that makes Lawrence a special place, and I don't want to be like Noblesville and Fisher's. I like the trucks.
We, we had the same issue where we had, we didn't want to discourage entrepreneurship.
That's right.
So, so, like, Council President, the, the doors open, we'd be happy to sit down and to talk, and.
Well, don't create a problem, because somebody don't like somebody taking some of their business.
Well, I think, I think competition's good.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I think, I think you figure out how to compete.
That's right.
Well, either way, we'll discuss it, and let us know. We'll be happy to work with you.
Thank you.
You, on the trash, I, I did have, made, made a little note. I think you said there was, somebody said they complained to somebody, and no one had came, and could you?
Yeah, she said she made calls to DPW, she hadn't gotten any response.
Did she give you any names on who she spoke with?
No, she just said she had called.
If, if you speak with her, and she gives you names, so I can know who to follow up with on.
Yeah, I do.
Well, not who she is, but who she spoke with, so I can address.
She'll be calling you. You just welcomed yourself.
Well, tell, tell her I, what I need is who she spoke with, and if, best guess, and her best estimate is when she spoke.
Yeah, but the bigger issue is, is thank you that she, she is an active citizen, and knows the right people, and know who to report. The bigger issue I'm really concerned about is how do we address this long-termly, because we are a community that has a lot of rental properties, a lot of moving in and out, in and out of here, and I'm very, very concerned, because it's, it's an issue in my own.
Sure.
In and out of my streets.
Right, right.
And in my neighborhood. And so it is a real concern, and not just, you know, something for her block.
I would agree.
But for others here in the city. And we want to address it before it gets out of hand, because this is the first year that we've been under this new contract.
Okay, thank you. Finances, I don't know at what point the clerk gives you the, if they're, the doors open. I, I mentioned the council president, I congratulated him at your organizational meeting last week. And anytime you want to speak, talk about finances, or, I will do everything. We've spoken before, council, when you were council president, Councilwoman Robinson, and, and Chavis, and, and then I've spoken with Councilwoman Crone, and Mazur. I'm trying to build relationships, and, and what, that's what I'm used to. We had a pretty, our council, keep in mind, when I was on the city council, I served under two Republican mayors as a Democrat, as a mayor. I had a, never had a, nine members of, of either party. It was always a bipartisan group, and I think they would tell you that we had a pretty good rapport. And I think they would tell you that we had a pretty good rapport and, and we're pretty open. So I, I'm willing to meet, and if it can be outside city hall for a cup of coffee and, and answer your questions on finances or any other topic as best I can.
When you say finances, what do you mean?
Well, I, I, just, you were talking, you, just anything with finances, in, any, you, today you had, the, the, just weren't, you wanted, somebody from the controller's office and, and I actually told him today that I don't think he needed to be here, but, so that was my call. So if I knew it, well, well, if, it, it better be nice too, so he's not answering off the cuff.
Or someone, and I'm not saying the controller needs to be here, but someone that if we have questions.
Sure.
We, if it's a, if it's a big enough concern for us, we're not going to feel comfortable voting. So, you know, ideally, we don't always catch things when they come in email, nor do we have an obligation to respond to an email. But if we can catch it and we can send the email and ask the question, we'll do that. But this was something that was just caught before the meeting.
Okay.
And it's about payroll.
Sure.
And of course, we want to, we want to approve
Sure.
the voucher that has payroll.
Sure. I understand. It, when, when it's, yeah, and if things come up at the last second, they come up at the last second, I completely understand. If it's known ahead of time, it would be easier to have the question so that we can...
We've done that. We, we always do that.
Okay, great, great.
But there's also times where things come up ahead of time.
I completely can understand.
And so if someone can't be here in person, they need to be on standby. We hit that section very quickly. So someone would be on the meeting for like ten minutes and...
I just know it's hard, you know, if, if they're not, if, it's just, the controller or anybody from that office would not necessarily have all the information at their fingertips, even at a council meeting. That's all I'm trying to do. But I understand completely.
Yeah.
I understand. Did I answer your questions?
Is it someone that would have that, that kind of information?
I'm sorry?
Is it someone that could have that information?
I, I'm not that person. I'm not, I wouldn't.
So, so we're not new to this rodeo. We, we've been, right, we've been doing this for, forever. And typically, someone from the, either the controller himself or someone from the controller's office is present for the meeting
Okay.
to answer any questions, not only as it relates to the voucher, but when we're dealing with things like approving things that deal with money or anything. We need to be able to ask that question and if possible, have it answered. If he can't answer it on the spot, then he gets back with us with the response. So I just don't want to set up, we're in a new year, we're trying to do things better. I'm going to be the finance chair and...
Well, I could tell you when I was mayor, I met with our finance chair as mayor twice a month. And we would go over any questions they had. Of course, we would also bring up ideas on to streamline things or things we were missing out on and such.
Yep.
So I, again, I'm trying to extend the olive branch and we'd be happy to meet, Council President, anybody decide you want to meet, any Chair, Finance Committee, whatever it may be, definitely be open to do that and try to streamline those things and get your questions answered to your satisfaction.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I answer all the questions I had?
I believe you.
Okay, thank you.
Leandre, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Thank you, Counselors, and I just want to extend my congratulations to President Kramer and congratulations on your ascension to presidency. And I want to thank President Robinson for last year's role as president, communicating back and forth on a regular basis and maintaining a great relationship. On all of your guys' desks, I gave you a copy of this year's events. So as you can see, a lot of events going on in the city of Lawrence. Some of these, majority are led by our great Director, Jamie Warwick is back there, is a lead line of our city events, but also too, Roman Koffer is with the Parks Department.
I'm sorry, what's her name?
Jamie, Jamie, there we go.
Lyric.
Lyric, I'm sorry, I'm terrible, I'm sorry. Jamie, she's fantastic. There's more events on the calendar this year. We're doing more innovative things with the city, try to bring, elevate our social media and get kind of our events out this year. There'll be more announcements coming up this year, be, share some more initiatives, some projects and things that will be coming from the administration. I just want to share some of the events that was happening. Some, some of them are partnerships, we allow our community partners, the school, district, Heartland, Arts for Lawrence, you name it. And then some are ours where we initiate as a city entity. So just keep that, some, some days might change here and there, some, you know, we may move some things around here and there, but I just want to make sure you guys have it and I'll encourage you all to come to our events as often as you can. I know you guys have busy schedule, busy lives, but if you could come out, participate in some of the city events and function, we'd really appreciate it. And with that, if you guys have any question for me, you know how to reach me, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next agenda item is citizens' comments. Citizens' comments shall be limited to three minutes. Any citizens wishing to speak, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Daniel Rapp, fifty-seven eighteen Waldenwood Drive. This is the third time that I've brought up this topic to the common council, and there's not been much action taken to resolve it. It's financial. As of six o'clock this evening, whenever I left home, the December monthly financial had not been posted to the webpage. And to me, thirty-one December was not only a end of month, it was the end of year. And my question is, how close was the actual revenues and expenses to the adopted twenty-two four budget? It's not out there. How does the taxpayers of the city of Lawrence know what twenty-two four brought? That's part of it. The second part is twenty-two five, the adopted budget. It's not posted. This is fifteen days into the new year. I would make the assumption, which may be wrong, that you have went through end-of-year procedures for twenty-two four and opened up the new books for twenty-two five. You were talking about approving vouchers. I was here on Tuesday and the utility people were already approving vouchers for the first fourteen days of January payroll. I know their budget is separate. Now, I do, and the other part on this budget, I was here this summer when you approved the proposal budget. And at that point in time, I left that meeting not knowing exactly if you approved the thirty-one million dollar budget or if you approved the twenty-eight million dollar budget that was balanced. Because the thirty-one million had more expenses than revenues. But the twenty-eight million dollar budget was not provided as a hard copy to the taxpayers. I assume that you council members got to see it. So, bottom line that I'm looking at here, I am requesting that an agenda item be added to the three February meeting for the administration, either Whitfield herself or the controllers, to come in here and explain the December financials, quote, end of year, where the expenses within the budget. I also want them to explain what is the twenty-two five adopted budget. And if they cannot explain those actual numbers, then I want them here to explain why they cannot. I think the taxpayers of the city of Lawrence are entitled to it. Thank you.[1792.65]